All right, call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum tonight. The first order of business on the agenda is approval of the minutes. We had a regular meeting on January 11th, 2016, and a work session and a closed meeting also on January 11th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes or questions about the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Rick, can you walk us through the agenda?
I certainly will. We have, again, just mentioned the work session on January 11th. The board met after the organizational meeting to talk a little bit about some of the opportunities and challenges as we move forward with our construction plans, as well as talking about some of the major initiatives that we've got going as we look to the 2016-17 school year. The board also moved into a closed session to talk about employee negotiations. For tonight's meeting, we have already acted on the minutes. We'll be recognizing some teachers who've done outstanding work in our school district who are recognized for their technology efforts. We'll be hearing from audience, members of the audience. We have a consent agenda the board will take action on. Our discussion reports, we have a significant leadership update, a lot of loose ends and new items that we're bringing to the board, just more for update and information. We'll then move to action items, which includes the agreement with the EME, Edina, Ed Minnesota Edina, budget parameters we talked about for the upcoming year. We've got some purchases, board committee reports, and that will conclude our regular business items for tonight's meeting, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. I believe we start with recognitions.
Yep.
So at this time, I'd like to call up Jamie Hawkinson and Lynn Timmer. Lynn is a special ed teacher at Southview and Jamie's over at Creek Valley doing that fourth grade thing, but long been recognized in our district for your activity in technology. TIES is an organization that annually helps us identify some teachers who are leading the way in technology and enhancing the learning for our students. Lynn, what drives you in technology? What's the love bug about that?
I just love learning new things and it was really special when I did the tech cohort last year. I highly recommend that for teachers. I was able to come back and have my students try things and just wow me with what they could do, so it was very exciting.
Jamie, how do you use technology as fourth graders? We think fourth graders and, you know, they're kind of, that's all they know is technology. How do you stay ahead of it? How do you encourage it? How do you support it?
Well, and speaking of, I just have to shout out, I have former fourth graders out here today, so it just warms my heart. It is ever-changing and I really like change, so technology provides that for my students. We are a one-to-one Chromebook classroom and every day we're finding new ways in which to integrate within our curriculum and the students are teaching me, as well as me teaching them with new applications. So it's just, it's really engaging, but at the same time, it provides an opportunity for them to prepare themselves for their future, so.
Good. And Lynn, when you look to next steps in technology, what are you going to be looking at? Because I know you both are just constant learners in this, but what are some of the things you're looking at going forward?
Well, my students continue to teach me a lot and I'm at the, with ninth graders this year and so I, what I'm really looking forward to is seeing where they're going to go as we transition them to the high school next year and I'm excited about that, so.
Good. And Jamie, how about you? What's next on the horizon for these kids as, the one-to-one is rather new at the elementaries? How do you see this exploding differently?
Well, there are endless possibilities and I think that that's, you know, part of the excitement about it because every year there's something new and so I try to keep up with it. I've attended the TIES conferences, I presented the TIES conferences and, and with Ari Dina Learning Institute, which is really special and we learn from the teachers, but I think moving forward, finding new ways in which to allow more personalized learning within my classroom, I mean, fourth grade can sometimes be prescripted in elementary and so allowing the students to choose and create to model how they are showing their learning and standards is kind of my next step, so.
Well, we can feel the excitement that you guys have for technology and for young people and learning and on behalf of the entire district, we do want to congratulate you. We've got a certificate of recognition and a quick picture we need to be taking.
Lynn, congratulations, thank you very much. And Jamie, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Next on the agenda is hearing from members of the audience. Sarah, you've given me one, is that just it? All right. The board does encourage people to speak before the board. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. The board will not typically respond to presentations, but will respond later on. Today, we have Jason Fadness, who I think is going to speak with some other people. So welcome.
Sorry, are you sticking to three minutes?
Come on up to the table.
We just need to have you come right up to the table and maybe just pull an extra, pull an extra chair and just need to have you speaking to the microphone, so when you're talking, just make sure you've got a microphone in hand. How's that sound? Maybe we can make sure you also give full introductions. How's that sound to start us off? Thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah, okay. I'm Dani Peterson. I'm currently a freshman at Southview Middle School and I'm working with Cool Planet to improve composting in our school's lunchroom.
Hi, I'm Dasha Parker. I'm a freshman at Southview and I'm working with Dani and the project.
Hi, I'm Abby Berkeley. I'm also a freshman at Southview and I'm also working with them.
Hello, I'm Jason Fadness and I go to, I'm a junior in Edina High School. I am also a member of SELC, the Student Environmental Leadership Council, and my high school's robotics team. Before I talk about why I am here, I would want to point out Policy 811, the general statement of policy. The student district values creating globally-minded citizens who are aware of their collective and individual environmental footprint and who are equipped to manage their consumption of environmental resources, like us. The district will implement its policies and practices to ensure that environmental sustainability is an integral part of district planning, decision-making, and daily operations. So with that in mind, that brings me to the referendum funding and more specifically the architectural plans. I would like for their, for the roof to be suitable for solar panels, not now, but in the future, sometime later. One of the reasons why I would like this is the city itself has recently committed to a community solar garden on the Public Works Building, so I'm thinking if the city's doing it, then, well, why shouldn't the schools? Just a quick fact that I got from my AP Biology textbook, only about 1% of the visible light that hits a photosynthetic organism is actually converted into chemical energy. So with that in, when you think about it, that's, that's a small amount of the light that's, that we actually receive and yet it's able to fuel all of life on Earth. That, I don't know about you, but that sounds like a pretty good energy source to tap into. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and we just want, before we leave, we want to invite you to two upcoming events. One is this Thursday and it is a movie about the military transitioning into clean energy and the other one is like a save the date for April 14th, which is the Edina Environmental Forum, so, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll probably have our architect address your question on solar energy a little bit later in the evening. Great, thanks for coming.
Stick around so you can hear it. Thank you for coming. Next on the agenda is the consent item. Rick, can you just walk us through that?
Certainly can and I should pause. We should also welcome students from Valley View Government Class here tonight. We welcome them and thank them for being here, so again, enjoy your evening here. The consent agenda items include personnel recommendations, our expenditures payable for January 20th, budget adjustments for 2016-17. Again, these are all routine items, commendations, we're recognizing our two exceptional technology teachers, then we have gifts from Cornelia, Edina Ed Fund, Highlands Elementary, Highlands PTO, two from the PTO, and then finally the target Take Charge of Education. So those are all our consent agenda items as well. We have some field trips as well that we have robotics going to two different locations.
Are there any items people want to take out of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we table the acceptance of gifts from Edina Education Fund just to provide some additional clarity.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will table the Edina Ed Fund. Are there any questions on the rest of the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good. We actually didn't bring the formal motion to the table, so I will move. Does someone want a second?
Second.
Seconded after we passed it.
Will we do the vote again?
No, it works.
Are we good?
Yeah, it works.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is reports and discussion. I think leadership is the first report.
Yep, Al, if we could pop up the PowerPoint, please. Again, this is kind of that transition time where we're still very much about the 2015-16 school year, but we're starting to take a focus on the 16-17 school year. We'll make Bell Burke available as well, but we, in December, did, through the process of taking a look at our programming with our BG5 study, decided to go deeper into our early childhood family education programming. We've done a guiding change document, really trying to get deeper now into not just the elementary through grade five, but also our early ed programming. Got a slide here before you, just talking about the different types of programming and services we provide, both child and parent interaction, guided play, parent discussion time, and sibling care. Again, this is programming for our early childhood special education, early childhood family education, early childhood screening, the Family Center Program. All these programs are, programs that we're looking at saying, how do we continue to serve? Last week, we had meetings with parents and staff, just again, getting input to say, how do we shape this going forward? We're looking at two different views. One, we're looking at the zero to 33-month program and then also looking at the zero to age five programming. And so both of those programs are under study right now. We're going to be developing some recommendations as we move forward and again, in those two different levels, one around the zero to 33-month program, as well as the zero to five-year program. Formally, we'll be bringing the, all those recommendations forward to the board in spring of 2016. They'll also work through the Community Education Advisory Council, but wanted to make the board and the community aware that we are doing some more data collection, both from an input standpoint, we've had previous surveys, but also now, we're just seeing even more growth and information coming forward from state and national levels on programming. So we expect to have some program plans rolled forward yet this spring and that would complete the BG5 study. Again, timeline for us, we'll have one set of recommendations looking out in February and then the final set of recommendations in April. I'm going to just kind of move us to ask Randy Smazel and Susan Tennyson and team to come forward and talk a little bit about some of the programming going on with our BG5 programming, as well as our middle school and high school programming, and so we'll have a variety of people supporting us from the Teaching and Learning Department.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Dressen and the Edina community. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to share a little information with you about our KG5 educational delivery learning. We did have a guiding change document that was developed last summer and guided our work. Our charge ultimately was to develop recommendations for implementation of a KG5 ed delivery model and that recommendation to do that work actually came out of the BG5 study, which was also completed last summer. As part of our work, we created a team of four teachers, five parents, and two administrators. There were also some district-level administrators engaged in the work and ultimately it was to review, evaluate, and research a number of delivery models that had been identified by the BG5 study for possible implementation. Those included International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program, HET, which stands for Highly Effective Teaching Framework, an EPS-designed model, one we would identify and build within our community, and OTHER, which ultimately led us down the path of STEM, STEAM, and C. We did have some experts work with us to include one of our own colleagues, Lisa Masika, who has worked within the HET framework, and an outside administrator who has worked with STEM, STEAM, and C, as well as IB. We ultimately identified four different schools to visit and we visited those schools in November and December of this past year. Our learning was and evaluation were really around the criteria identified in the guiding change document and as we looked at STEM, we saw that that program or a program that was like STEM, embedding science, technology, engineering, and math into our elementary program, had strong potential. IB, PYP, we identified that there were a number of the criteria that were not met with, within IB. Highly Effective Teaching and EPS were a little more challenging to evaluate completely based on the criteria because it's so dependent on what we develop within our own community. So the next steps, ultimately, we made a recommendation to the elementary principals and to Dr. Dressen to continue to share these findings with our stakeholders and gather additional feedback and to recommend that we create and implement a program within Edina Public Schools that is unique to our learning community. Within that, STEM may be embedded, it may be a strong component of it, as would be our elementary world language programming that we are exploring and several other components that Randy will identify as he moves forward with his, his presentation this evening. Once that is done, and it really is about aligning with our educational competencies, delivering all of that in a personalized learning framework, it must be equitable and it must be sustainable, given the resources that we have within the community. So we will continue our work and I'm going to pass this along to Randy to speak a little bit more in that regard.
Good evening. Our district leadership at the elementary level has been discussing the KG5 program design and we have been working on drafting some ideas that later we'll create as recommendations and we'll be bringing that to the board and to staff. Currently, we are reviewing reading materials from several vendors. It's been about 10 years since we've had new reading materials at the elementary level here in Edina and so we will have new reading materials next fall. We're going through the process. We've narrowed down to several vendors. We will be bringing back a recommendation to the board regarding those elementary reading materials and that adoption very soon. In terms of our delivery findings, the area that we want to really move forward is to create our own integrated curriculum and we'll continue to shape that through our dialogue and through our discussions with elementary staff, but looking at some of those other programs, as Susan had mentioned, did not hit all of the criteria that we are looking for. So the direction that we're headed is to create our own integrated approach to curriculum development. There'll be more on that coming soon. We've also been discussing different implementation models around world language in the elementary school and we have some work to do there in evaluating some of those different model types, but we'll be bringing that board, that information to the board and staff. We have not yet had a lot of discussion around elementary schedule, but that is on our docket to have discussions about as well. And then overall, we'll be bringing these as a set of recommendations for KG5 program design to the board in the future. In terms of middle school program decide, design, we have visited five different middle schools, two in Eastern Carver, Dakota Meadows down in Mankato, a couple of middle schools over in Apple Valley, Rosemont, Eagan School District, and the purpose of those visits was twofold. One was to look at space and space designs of middle schools and how that may influence the space design of our middle schools here with Valley View and Southview, and the other one was to look at program designs. The visit to Eastern Carver was specifically looking at their personalized learning model and the structure of that and our staff were very, very interested in that and have been talking about it ever since. We have been dialoguing about key elements of middle school design. Our next meeting is actually tomorrow evening to push that a little bit further and a deep discussion about what is core and what is choice in an in-grade curriculum model and look forward to having that dialogue with the board moving forward. We also have been dialoguing about what's exploratory, is middle school exploratory, is middle school elective? What is the design we want for our middle schools in our, in our next gen of Edina Public Schools? Middle school schedule options will be on the agenda to discuss next as well. Sean Dudley, our principal from Valley View Middle School, will be leading the task force at the middle school level to have that discussion and again, a set of recommendations coming around middle school program design yet this spring to the board. At the high school level, we did have some staff go to Palo Alto to visit and observe their counseling and advising program and this was a 6-12 visit. I have this under high school, but it was really a 6-12 visit and we're looking at different aspects and components of counseling and advising and what that means for what we want the program to look like here at Edina. We have a group of about four area leaders that will have some release time this spring at the high school level and they will be digging into future high school schedule, how to incorporate that learning of the counseling and advising recommendations, how to move the competency-based model at the high school level and personalized learning. They'll also be looking at the flow of 6-12 curriculum alignment and how our current work at the high school level is aligned to policy and have some recommendations around that and we'll bring, again, those recommendations for the KG5 program, the middle school program, and the high school program back to the board for discussion and action later this spring. Just a quick update around our Gift and Talented Study. One of our major recommendations is to really advance the personalized learning model. We believe the personalized learning model benefits our students who have been identified for gifted services, but also benefits all students. And so far, we've taken a draft set of recommendations to our GT teachers for discussion. We've discussed them with our different principal groups, our Staff Development Committee at Lead and Learn, our Teachers on Special Assignment Team, our Teaching and Learning Board Subcommittee, and then our District Advisory Council for GT. So we also are going to take those to staff, to our community in March, in a couple of public meetings in March. We'll have an online survey, then we'll take that information back to our lead team as we revise those recommendations, bringing final recommendations back to our Teaching and Learning Board Subcommittee and then finally to our board for discussion and action later this spring. So we have a number of different recommendations regarding programming that will be coming to the board yet this spring. With that, I'm going to turn over to Donna Roper, our Director of Research and Evaluation, to talk about some assessment changes coming up.
Good evening. Along with all the program changes comes the future of assessment, guiding change, the next generation of assessment, a balanced approach here in Edina. And one of the pictures that you have kind of details for you, what traditional assessment might look like compared to what next gen is going to look like. That's a graphic from the U.S. Department of Education, but here in Edina, we are already starting to realize some of these next gen features, thanks to the work of Steve and his department in IT, but more importantly, the culture of assessment for learning is going to be a big focus of the guiding change. Assessment and grading and reporting practices are all going to get a review and starting out with the guiding change document that we are putting together and have preliminarily shared it with a few committees and we'll be bringing that forward. So the, the clear purpose, assessment of learning, assessment for learning and as learning, our purposes of our assessment approach, the types that we'll use will be formal and informal. We'll use standardized assessments, of course, but really looking for best practices, multiple measures to show what students are learning and what they know. The next, I just want to give you a kind of an update on where we are with MAP testing because we're in the height of it right now. We're hoping to be done by the end of the month and we're hoping to have results in the hands of teachers and students so that they can use that data. Again, a feature of next gen assessment is that we are embedding the assessment right into the learning, so we're making use of those assessment results as we go in the current year. One nice change this year is that we really were able to condense our schedule due to the equipment, having a lot more equipment available to our students, so in Edina, we're really fortunate because our testing schedules have been significantly reduced because of where we sit with technology.
I remember in 2009, the Minnesota Department of Education talking about online by 2009 and that was their premises that all these assessments would be moving to an online format. Well, it's 2016 and actually now we are living in that reality and as the technology, the personalization of technologies afforded the district the ability to provide those students access to technology to take those tests. Just only a few years ago, we were having to schedule students into computer labs and have a whole month disrupted of instruction because of assessments and now, because of Chromebooks and iPads and our student tablets and the students' computers, we're able to finish the testing within weeks and so it's been a great facilitation of the use of technology. But I don't think we're done yet. This spring, the MCA tests or our high-stakes tests will be delivered online. Those will all be online this year and in order to ensure that the technology's working, we've worked closely with Teaching and Learning and the Assessment Department to problem-solve any potential issues. We absolutely don't want anything to happen during that time. And one of the things we've talked about is how do we ensure that the technology platform is robust and secure and reliable? And to that end, we are thinking about how to provide additional devices or ensure there's adequate devices for testing. So we started brainstorming about that. We talked a little bit about the possibility of accelerating eLearning Squared purchase and so you heard tonight, one of our TIES exceptional teachers is a fourth grade teacher that enjoys the Chromebooks as a one-to-one. Our plan is to do that for third grade next year and we are proposing that we accelerate the purchase of those Chromebooks by purchasing them now so that we could use them as assessment computers during the spring testing. We would ensure that we'd have a really robust platform for testing and then put those into those third grade classes next fall.
And one other thing coming your way will be a dashboard with the spring results that we hope to get some time going into the future here with you to show you how that's going to work. Our hope is that the MCA and the MAP and ACT plan, the spring test results, will be available on our first iteration of the dashboard for, for school board and principals.
Also wanted to provide the board and the community an update on our student information system implementation. I'll remind you that in May, our current vendor has decided to cease development on the product we currently use, IQ, SchoolView, and TSIS. We took a good intentional time to work with our community to evaluate what our options are and we picked a product called Infinite Campus. We're well underway with that implementation right now, looking at the data conversion, but the critical components that are going to affect our teachers and our community is training and support and so we have worked closely with the Teaching and Learning Department and with Mike Walker and Megan Hasselballer, who is our Digital Learning Specialist, to develop a teaching, a training plan for our staff that has options. So just like we talk about personalized learning for our students, we're developing personalized learning options for our staff that include becoming a coach or early mentor or ambassador for that product, taking online classes over the summer, attending classes in the summer, or in the fall, the large sit-and-get opportunity. Support, we're really excited about our support because our support's going to allow us to have a 1-800 number for our staff and for our community to call, as well as providing classes for and being able to assist our stakeholders as they use this new system. And as our technology vision articulates, is we will continue to look for that one-stop-shop for all technology, but I'd just like to remind everyone that if you have multiple bank accounts, those aren't all under one-stop and we'll continue to go for that, but that's a really difficult aspirational goal to get to. And additional information about our campus implementation can be found on our website and I'll just show you our milestones here as we begin the implementation. So January and February, it's a data conversion. February, March is some initial training. June, we will finish up with SchoolView and IQ and then in June, we will finish up with SchoolView and IQ, and then in July, we'll go live and continue the training with a go-live date for Infinite Campus for everyone the start of the school.
We might want to pause here.
Excuse me, we might want to pause here just for their questions around teaching and learning before we make our transition to construction, which is the last phase of the leadership report. But any follow-up questions of the team here tonight around anything presented?
Yeah, I'd like to add a couple of questions. It was regarding that slide that had the criteria and then our four options, STEM, international, okay. You had, I guess, four options. STEM looks like it was a yes under all categories, and EPS was to be decided under most with no under one. And it sounds like we're going with EPS. And I was just wondering, what else is there that, that we'll see or that's coming under the to be determined that's EPS teacher developed?
So with the educational delivery study, our purpose was to evaluate these four possibilities in terms of the criteria and share that learning then with our elementary principals and administrative team so that that information could be included in an evaluation of all aspects of next generation BG5 to include components such as world language at the elementary level, some different schedule options, intense professional development. So a variety of aspects need to be considered as well as the educational delivery model. The STEM type, STEM programming or something like STEM, so STEAM or C do meet all of our criteria, and we do see that as being the richest parts of STEM being potentially implemented within our next generation delivery at the elementary level. It's combining that with all of the other elements as well. So that recommendation was made to the principals, and they are reviewing all of that information. We also know within the context of Edina Public Schools that neighborhood schools are very important at the elementary level. Our community has provided us that feedback. Stakeholders from parents and teachers and administrators believe that neighborhood schools are important and should be sustained. So when we look at STEM or a very articulated program, educational delivery model like STEM, if we are looking at implementing that across all schools or perhaps one or two schools, that has different implications. So that is what we continue to study.
Appreciate that. And I think it's, it's a great clarification. I've heard a lot of support for reintroducing world languages at our elementaries and trying to have some personalization with neighborhood schools. It leads to a follow-up I had about the curriculum materials. You've heard that the materials we're using are about 10 years old, and so I imagine that this investment is expected to last, you know, maybe eight to 10 years or so. Are we putting the cart before the horse moving forward with new curriculum materials before we figured out what our delivery service is going to look like with all these different varieties of options?
I think it's a great question. When we are looking at these reading materials, they're really in a couple of different phases. So when we teach reading, there are explicit, there's explicit reading instruction that occurs, and then there's an opportunity to embed reading in other areas. And so the first phase of materials that we're looking at is about those materials that teach reading strategies, that help teach reading instruction. And that is something that we'll do regardless of what area or of educational program we ultimately pursue as our model moving forward. The second phase will then be exactly those items that you're describing. There'll be, there'll be reading materials that support integration, there'll be reading materials that support whatever kinds of curricular themes that we use, and then we'll do the second half of that purchase after that. But the first part of the, the phase one is to get those instructional reading materials in place by next fall.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Donna, Susan, Randy, and Steve.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have Susan.
We're getting an update on the facilities. Going to ask Susan, a couple of our consultants are here tonight, and ask them to join us up front as well.
Thank you, Chair Warren Friedman and members of the board. I'm joined here by Von Dirks from World Architects, you've seen him often, and Jay Palmroy from HAA Engineering Consulting. So to kind of help us work through some of the updates that we're having here, so we'll just kind of quickly go through some updates for you and the community, and then we're happy to answer some questions as you may have them. So as a reminder that we're moving forward with the implementation of the voters approved last, last spring, so looking at ways to transform our learning spaces, improve our infrastructure, and enhance our security. In terms of transforming learning spaces, just some updates for the 2016 construction projects. We have completed what we're calling Phase Two, the design development, so, or nearing completion, I should say. Next Monday at your work session, we look forward to being able to present some 3D drawings, which are always much more exciting than the 2D schematics that you've been doing for the high school and our three elementary schools that are on the docket this year, Concord, Countryside, and Highlands. Those are being completed now after intensive user group meetings with a lot of the stakeholders at those individual schools, following up on the schematic designs that you guys approved previously. The 2017 projects, the phase one, the schematic design, you've approved the ones for Cornelia, Creek Valley, and Normandale, and we look forward to moving into that phase two sometime later in February to start doing that. Again, we're looking at doing all of these designs at the same time, at least this spring, so that we're looking at the total $124.9 million package and trying to make sure that we're staying on budget throughout the project and not looking at them piecemeal. And then we're nearing completion on the schematic designs for Southview, Valley View, and Early Ed. A lot of that is related to the discussion that you just heard about the Early Ed program and the middle school programming conversations that are going on. Wanted to also update you on, recall that they're a large part, we're getting all new student furniture throughout the district, and so we're looking forward to that. We have a student furniture task force that's going on right now. We actually have two of them, one looking at Early Ed in elementary and one looking at middle school and high school. So we have teacher representatives from all of those. Some of the data that we've been able to gather for those task forces include, we had some pilots this fall with some furniture that we've tested out at all levels at the elementary, middle school, and high school level. So we've got data that came in from there to include some wonderful conversations with our students who are using those furniture, and they are amazingly articulate about what they like and don't like about the furniture. You see, one of the pieces there in that photo is a young man over at Creek Valley who was piloting it, and it's one of the favorite pieces of furniture. Actually, that's half of it because the other half is in the showroom right now. But they love to be able to use that space for reading, and some of them are on the floor leaning against it, and they kind of stack it up. So it's been a great learning experience for them. We're hoping to, right now, we have, this week, we opened up some showrooms just down the hall here. So we have a showroom of Early Ed furniture and elementary furniture. We have a classroom that has middle school and high school furniture, and then we have another classroom that has a lot of furniture for those extended learning spaces. As you recall, we're really trying to create some external spaces utilizing the hallways differently into some more spaces that are more conducive to learning than just sitting on the floor. And so right now, tomorrow, actually, we'll be bringing through a number of different student groups to help us narrow that list down, and our task force will be looking at those. And then hopefully after this week, we'll be able to narrow it down to a list of some standards. What we're trying to do is create some standards across the district so that each site can then choose from a catalog, so it's not just everybody go pick whatever furniture they want. So from a management standpoint, district-wide, we're trying to look at that. So it's kind of exciting, and we'll get you some information on when you can come and check out some of that furniture as well. And then we did want to move, talk a little bit about the improving infrastructure, and I'm going to look at my colleagues here at the table to address more of that. But just a reminder that the referendum plan did call for converting four natural turf fields, two at the high school and two at the community center with synthetic turf, and also possibly replacing the baseball infield down here at the ECC or Southview kind of area. We've been doing a lot of product research on the different types of synthetic turf that we could be looking at, looking at durability, safety, and cost. And the facilities committee has had a couple of meetings about this as well, just really looking at the durability, and it was consensus that we do need to be looking at while we would love to, we just know that the natural turf just isn't sustainable in terms of making, with all the use that it gets, and so looking at a lot of different ways that we can find synthetic turf. And then the discussion really turned to what kind of synthetic turf. So there's different kinds. There's the chrome rubber or alternative infill. Any more questions, I would defer to them. But that there's a whole bunch of studies out there, and what we're finding is that it's not conclusive, that there's a lot of, lot of national media reports recently on some of them. As far as the injury that is part of the synthetic turf versus a natural turf, there isn't a lot of significant difference. There are some questions that people have raised about environmental impact, and there's just not a lot of conclusive evidence to that. Depends which study you want to look at, and they'll tell you one way or the other. And we do know that the cost for the alternative infill is about twice the cost of the chrome rubber infill. So with that, the recommendation from the facilities committee and from administration is to move forward with the chrome rubber for those four fields, but I'll ask, have my colleagues here answer any more questions about turf.
Jay and Von, you've done a lot of work on these. Jay, talk a little bit about your experience, number of fields that you guys have put in and your experience with just the synthetic turf and the opportunities and challenges of creating.
Sure. Members of the board, Dr. Dressen, we, over the last 15, 20 years, have put in probably over 50 synthetic turf fields, including the two that you have at ECC here and over at the high school, as well as any number of fields right in the metro area here. To pair on, I think, the, the topic at, at large here tonight is, most recently, there's been some discussion about the SBR rubber. Susan mentioned chrome rubber. SBR rubber is ground-up tires, the black granules that you'll see in the, in the turf. That's what allows the turf to be resilient, to provide that, that bounce when a player falls on it or, or runs on it. That SBR rubber is, again, as I said, ground-up tires that have chemicals in there that just recently have been raised to perhaps, in Oregon, there were some soccer goalies that have contracted cancer. And the news reports have, have questioned whether it is the SBR rubber. And as Susan mentioned, there's really no conclusive evidence that that is in fact the, the issue. 1% of the fields out there have gone to an alternative infill that would take out that equation, the SBR rubber. And again, that's 1% of all the fields out there, of the thousands and thousands, and only two or three in the whole state of Minnesota. So if there are questions related to that, I can certainly answer those. But our, our direction, we've been going here with, with the fields that you're looking at is, would be similar to what you have. Technology's advanced over the last 10 years now, I think those fields have been in. But as, as mentioned, the cost to go to an alternative infill is about two or, or more times the, the cost.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to bring up for members of the community some of the topics that you've covered just now and that we talked about at our last facilities committee meeting. My understanding, and correct me if this is not accurate, but my understanding is that with the SBR infill and the alternative infill, there is no conclusive evidence on impact to individuals for any of those alternatives. Correct.
Yeah, correct.
So we, you know, if we choose to go with an alternative, we don't have any additional information about that as we do about the SBR?
Correct. The EPA, the, whether it be the playground surfacing, the synthetic turf, grass surfacing vendors have all requested that the EPA provide a real strong backing to it, or at least a statement. They've kind of wavered around it, but they have said that they are studying it and that they'll have a more conclusive statement coming up. It's the APA, so they're taking their time, but correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Can we move off of chrome rubber and onto another subject? We had, as, as you heard, Von, the presentation from students about alternative energy and how we can keep that in mind in the, in the building. We've talked often about solar panels or other things and found none of them are really cost-effective at the moment. But this was a new idea about trying to keep open options for future construction or use future changes. Can you just address what we're doing in that regard, if, if anything, and what we can do?
Yeah, you're right. We've had a lot of topics along the lines of not only solar energy, but other sustainable options, how we look at operations for the district. When you're looking at any of these, you're really weighing out a number of different factors. You're weighing out first cost, what's it cost to actually put the equipment in? You're weighing out ongoing operational costs, maintenance costs, and you're, you're weighing out the environment or the reason to make the decision in the first place. If you look at it from just a numbers game, you're going to look at a payback of five years, absolutely makes sense to do that. If it's under 10 years, you consider it. If it's over 10, it probably doesn't make sense at this time. And we've really been pushing for solar to be a more viable option, and in new construction, we're at that point right now where it's, it's reaching that tipping point. We've actually talked about the transportation facility as a great example of a project that we could look at implementing a full solar array on the roof for that. The problem comes in with your existing buildings. When we add the solar panels to the roof, there's a number of things that come into play. The structure of the roof was never designed to hold that additional weight as it is. Oftentimes, when we're looking at buildings from the 50s and 60s, we're having to come back in and do corrective work just to handle new snowdrift load requirements that are on the roof. And as you add solar panels, you create more snowdrift load for the buildings themselves. And so those two factors become sort of problematic. I'd point to the work that Wright-Hennepin is doing currently with their solar farm. They have the economy of scale, they don't have them on buildings, they put them on the ground, and they advertise them to the public as this allows you to take part in solar energy without the cost of buying the panels or the need to maintain them. And I think those two statements right there show that to make that investment makes it a little bit challenging for the typical homeowner, or especially in your case where you have so much square footage for the district, a way of, of making that really viable. And what we've been looking at for the buildings is, for example, on all of the additions, especially with the high school, we're doing major additions to that building, looking at where we can structure the roof for this, looking at where it can be implemented in the future. We remain optimistic that with nanotechnology advances, that the panels will become lighter, that there'll be ways of incorporating that onto items that aren't necessarily the structural weight or design of current solar panels. And so we look towards the future for that, much like we'd look towards how we can expand onto the buildings with additions or implement any future technologies that come up to make it more affordable. It's actually interesting, we had Southview students here tonight. We were contacted by Michael McDonald last month about the same question, can we put solar panels on the high school? We have an open invitation to the students to come by our office, talk with our engineers about how we would look at this, work with either the project architects working on the project or Eric Hamilton from the district to look at what we've studied and consider some of the same information that we brought forward to you as a board and a facilities committee on it.
Thank you.
It's, it, the number one advantage to it, every study that you read around schools is it's better as an educational tool at this point than as an energy-saving tool at this point, so.
Just as a, as a word of encouragement to the students, I mean, certainly if someone brings an idea to you that you haven't thought of that would work.
Absolutely.
I think you'd find a lot of support in the board for changing plans to incorporate it.
Free labor, sure. No, we, we think, as part of our mission, our goal as architects that work in the educational field is, I wish I had that when I was in high school, that I had an architect or an engineer I could go to and they would show me what's going on. We'd love to have students come to the office, sit down, have these same types of discussion that we're having, because I think it, it not only becomes informative for both sides, but it triggers new ideas for the MS students.
Thanks.
So Von, maybe you want to give your phone number to them?
Susan can get ahold of us for anybody that wants to.
I would just add that actually we had a student on the high school core planning team who did actually take advantage of that to sit down and meet with them. So, you know, we do want to encourage that as an educational component as well. Just wanted to return quickly to the turf because we know that people will have questions about it in terms of timing. So the, the installation of the turf would be part of the bid packages that would be coming in March as far as the high school is concerned, so. But those drawings will be coming out soon in February to keep us on schedule, but it would be part of a larger contract.
All right.
And then the last, I guess, hearing no other questions about turf or solar gardens, that we just wanted to give you a brief update on the transportation services. Actually, Von, you can.
Sure. As, as you move forward and, and look at land acquisition, we'll follow a same planning process that we've looked at for the other buildings in terms of involving a core planning team, working through the same types of design issues, and working through the city on issues like stormwater management and other factors for this. We would hope to be going out to bid with this in late summer of 2016 so we can be breaking ground in the fall.
And the one that apparently got covered up by the drawing there, which is a question that I fielded a lot from community members, is the ongoing discussion, now that we have a purchase agreement with land, the ongoing discussion of what to do with our current a purchase agreement with land, the ongoing discussion of what to do with our current facilities. So just, for the public's sake, just letting them know that the Board is continuing that conversation on what to do with that.
Well, and Susan, how long do we predict we'll still be in the current facilities as well?
Well, I mean, a minimum of, we need to get this built first.
Exactly. So it's not like they're vacating anytime soon.
Right, right. So I mean, you know, it'll be a good year before we'll be able to move over there. So yes, that's why the conversations are still going. But I know in the last two weeks since people heard that we, you know, approved that, now they're like, okay, so what are you doing with that property? It's like, well, that's part of the discussion, but first things first, and let's get this built, so.
Any other questions on construction? Otherwise, we'll go to the last slide, Susan, if we could. And this is just an invite to the community and the Board, as well as students, to join us on Thursday, March 3, 7:00 p.m. at the Edina Community Arts Center, Performing Arts Center, I should say, the Edina Performing Arts Center, Shiroki Holly. Many of the Board members have heard Shiroki and many of the staff will be joining our community to talk a little bit about culturally responsive community. As we continue to evolve as a community, how do we continue to be a community? And Shiroki's going to be joining us for a great evening of discussion and dialogue. And we're co-sponsoring this with the City of Edina and look forward to sharing more information with the community about this. But we welcome Shiroki to our community and it should be a great conversation.
I'll just note, the School Board has met twice with Shiroki Holly. It's been fascinating, so I would encourage people to attend.
Will this be added to the district calendar?
Yes, yes it will. Yep, we're going to do some promotion around this, as well as the city.
Oh, wonderful.
All right. Next would be the report and discussion on capital project requests. Margot, you've got that one?
Good evening, members of the School Board and Dr. Dressen. The capital project request process actually starts in October. And we receive the requests in December, process them, and bring them forward to you in January and February for approval. This is a little bit ahead of our 1617 budget process, because in the case of capital purchases, we need, in some cases, to get ahead with preparing RFPs or quotes if necessary, or even making purchases, purchase orders ahead of time, so that we get the materials in a timely fashion or get the work done over the summer. So, just a little background on the capital request project approval process and how it has changed in the last few years. And I would foresee in the next two years throughout construction that this would continue. Once we started alt facilities, then we try to, it's a running list of requests from the sites, from departments, on what their needs are. And it might be building-related or equipment-related. And we still continue that running list, but we will look at it with the lens of, are we going to be in a building, for example, two years from now for alt facilities, or in this case now with the construction plan, to make sure that we're aligning our dollars in approval of requests, so that we're not spending dollars and then a couple of years later ripping it out, or getting furniture that doesn't match and that kind of thing. So what we're going, we have seen, and I reported in last year's audit with the carryover in capital, and I would foresee we would continue to see this. We have specific requests for things that we can do that won't be impacted by construction. But I also foresee that in all the majority of areas, that we'll continue to see carryovers in capital, which normally we don't do throughout this construction period, because departments, sites want to be very planful about also saving some dollars, so that if not everything is addressed through alt facilities or the construction, that they have some dollars and resources to go to for, you know, just fine-tuning some things. So, that's just a little bit background on how this process has changed in the last couple of years. And our total revenue, just available that we basically have in capital, is around, just a little over $2 million. We've got some fixed costs with copier leases and taxes. So we have about $2 million to allocate. The requests came in over $3 million. And that total dollar amount has been less the last couple of years, because we do have a 10-year alternative facilities plan to help us with our deferred maintenance. The typical uses are for transportation, for bus replacement, textbook replacement, and curriculum site and program equipment allocation. So each of the sites get an allocation based on their enrollment in their building, their square footage, and their building age. So that they also have some funds to access in case something isn't approved. They still feel it's a priority that they need, they can put some resources to it. And then a buildings and grounds allocation for district-wide types of things that maybe don't qualify for alt facilities, will not be addressed in the bond. And we also keep some for emergencies. All of a sudden, there's a section of a roof that might be leaking, or something in plumbing in a building that we need to take care of. And we need funds to be able to access for that. On the left-hand side of this slide, you can see what the budget was for 1516 and the recommended use of the funds for 1617. Not a lot of major change in terms of the allocations there. The areas I would highlight, in some cases, when we're doing alt facilities, there may be an area that doesn't qualify that we have to use capital funds for. So, for example, in 1516, you see that Highlands Parking, there was some additional funds there that weren't covered under alt facilities. We don't have any of those for this coming year, so that's good. We did separate out annual vehicle replacement from bus replacement, because we do have a variety of vehicles. We haven't had a systematic plan in place. They've gotten really old and we've had to replace them anyway the last couple of years. So being a little more planful about that and saying, we'll allocate dollars if we need it, we will use it. If we don't, we won't. We also had a special request to set aside some dollars one time in the capital area for band uniform replacement. There's a fundraising effort going on in there, so the recommendation is that we would have that in the 1617 allocation for dollars. Within the capital projects area for buildings, the focus, because we have alternative facilities, projects, and deferred maintenance, and the bond, what we're using out of capital is to address refreshing and replace the cafeteria table inventory, and then also entry mat replacement, and then the emergency contingency that I talked about for buildings. Usually I have a slide that is a little nicer than just the end, that says, do you have any questions?
Usually there's a question mark right there.
That's right, that's right. So, this is just a report tonight, and then I'll bring it back for a request for approval at the next Board meeting. So, any questions at this time?
Margot, how are we thinking about, assuming the bus garage goes forward as expected, for the additional fleet we'll need for special ed or other purposes?
Excellent question. So, what we do know is between the inter-integration or between district transportation and the special ed transportation, we would need an additional over 20 buses. So what David White and I are working on is a multi-year plan to be able to phase bringing in those contracted services. So what it might be is looking at, maybe we bring in one contracted service in one year, accrue and save some dollars to bring in another contracted service. Certainly, we need to get the building built, and you had the other updated report a few minutes ago, in order to be able to do that. But that is an area in capital that we will, because that's not funded under bond or alt facilities, so that we will need to be able to accrue and save for. And it might be something that, in a particular year in capital, we scale back in some other areas, if that can be managed, to have that in the dollars to bring forward in the busing, and then we bring the other budgets back up.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Margot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margot.
Next, we turn to our action part of the agenda. The first item is the approval of the master agreement with Edina Minnesota, Edina, Education Minnesota, Edina. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Either Gwen or Dr. Jackson, however you go, could you give us some background on this?
Sure. Gwen works for me.
Okay.
And I am very pleased to bring forward to you tonight the proposal to approve the contract for 2015 through 2016 with Edina, with Education Minnesota, Edina. It's a two-year contract that includes a 2% increase in salary for years one and two, as well as a 2% increase on the schedules that are in the back of the contract as well. And then there, we currently have two salary schedules. We have what we call an older one, which is the one that we have been using. And there are some teachers who are still on that particular salary schedule. Some of those teachers will receive a one-time stipend on August 30 of 2016. And then, effective July 1, all teachers will move to the new salary schedule. So that will take place, again, starting July 1. A few other changes is that we, there is a $1 increase for our teachers who work with early childhood, family education. And there are times when they have to work after 4 o'clock or on weekends. And so when they have to work those hours, they will have a $1 differential added to their current salary. Health increase, health insurance increases continue, and so there is a 2% increase for teachers year one and year two. And we have a Minnesota State Retirement Systems Healthcare Savings Plan, and currently it is $425, and it will increase to $600 per year. So that's an increase of $175 per year. We also have a number of teachers who are National Board certified, and then we have other teachers, other people in the teachers bargaining groups, such as psychologists and speech therapists and others who receive a national certification. That increase will go from $1,000 stipend to a $2,000 stipend beginning next year. And then currently, the teachers have three days of personal leave time over the course of the year, and next year it will increase to four days for personal leave. The total allocation for basic leave is, remains the same, but they will be able to use four days of those leaves for personal use. And the increase is 7.83% over the next two years, or five point, just shy of $5.8 million. I will entertain any questions for Margot or myself.
I know several of us have sat through the negotiations, so we've had all of our questions answered during that lovely 12-hour day. Anybody else have questions? Any discussion?
I just wanted to thank you for all the work that went into this, and to your team, Gwen.
And to the team from the teachers.
Teachers as well.
Absolutely. It's a partnership.
Yep. Want to thank the teachers, administrators. Excellent. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, is passed and approved. Thank you very much. The next action item is the 201617 budget parameters. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
And Margot, are you going to walk us through that?
Attached in your board materials are the budget parameters for 1617. This is the typical format to start our budget process. We will be, we have a couple of work sessions coming up that we will be having conversations about our budget process and moving forward for 1617, what we need to do, and multi-year plan, a financial plan. What the 1617 budget parameters does is highlight enrollment assumptions, revenue assumptions, and expenditure assumptions for the base plan. And what we, then we use this for the base plan, and then we build upon that different scenarios. What if we receive this in X amount in revenue from the state? What if we reduce X amount of dollars on expenditures and do our budget planning in that way? So there are, basically, within these three areas, enrollment, revenues, and expenditures, there were not major changes from the previous year, with the exception of some years, we're making a guesstimate or estimate of what state funding will be. We do know that there's a 2% increase there, so I'm happy to say we know what that is versus guessing what that is. And I would answer any questions that you have.
No questions?
Again, these parameters are pretty straightforward. They will be going to the Finance Committee along the way, as well as the full Board. The Board's moving into some work sessions coming up this weekend. We'll talk a little bit about it this weekend and on Monday. But we're also making this public, making it public to everybody, so people are aware of how we're shaping our planning for the future. I think, Margot, for her, a great work with this and her whole team. And then probably the other thing is, we're not looking just at the 1617 year, but we're projecting out through 201819. And so all those, all that information, it gets rooted in these parameters, and they've worked well for us historically. So thank you, Margot, for your work.
Thank you.
All in favor? The aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion to approve the 201617 budget parameters is approved. Next on our agenda item is we have technology purchases. Looks like we have three different things. The purchase of Chromebooks, purchase of carts, and Internet.
Can I make a motion to combine those three items?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, they are now all combined. And can I get a motion then to bring them all before us?
So moved.
Second.
Steve, I think you're up, and I think you gave us a little bit of a preview of this a few minutes ago.
Indeed. Again, good evening, Board. Superintendent Dr. Dressen. E-Learning Square is moving along quite well in all of our grade levels. And next year calls for the third year and a three-year phased implementation of E-Learning Square. That would mean providing the third-grade classrooms a cart of Chromebooks, 30 Chromebooks to use in one-to-one, as was articulated a little bit earlier this evening with our TIES technology leader. To help facilitate the online assessments, the MCA online assessments, it's the desire of DMTS to purchase those, half those Chromebooks earlier, or 300 Chromebooks now in February, configure them, and then be able to utilize those for MCA testing in our secondaries and high schools, so that we ensure that we have a secure, robust, and reliable testing environment for our high-stakes tests. That would be for the 10 carts, so we would be able to put 30 carts in, or 30 Chromebooks in each cart, and then 300 Chromebooks. Then again, in July, we'd purchase the remainder of the Chromebooks that we'd use for the third-grade E-Learning Squared one-to-one.
We've got the Internet as well.
Sorry. We also, it's fantastic. I've been looking after the holiday. It's fun to watch and see how many more people join our wireless network. We're over 9,000 users daily on our wireless network, which is an incredible feat for my staff. Tom Johnston, who's our network administrator, Nathaniel Lindley, do an incredible job of making sure that's going. This bid is for our wireless Internet, so that we're able to ensure that we have a robust wireless guest network going forward. We received three bids, and MNIT, or the Minnesota Office of Enterprise Technology, came in with a significantly cheaper bid this year, which we're pretty happy with. So we'll be able to save some money, yet still have the same level of speeds that we've had in the past years.
Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The technology purchases of the Chromebooks, the carts, and the Internet is approved. The next item, action item, is Board Committee Appointments, Liaisons and Representatives for 2016. May I have a motion?
So moved.
These are identical to what we talked about last time, I think with one exception. I believe that Regina is moving up to meet and confer, and Sarah's going off-meet-and-confer. Amir has been added to Southview, and you were added to one other item, Amir, correct? Oh, and then I added myself to AMSC. Almost forgot about myself being added to a committee. Any questions or changes? No discussion? All in favor? Both aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The Board Committee Appointments, Liaisons and Representatives is approved. Next is, where are we at next? Next is, where we at next, Rick?
Just information, which is the staff recognition, and then we can move to announcements.
So I just want to point out, for those who don't always read to the bottom, recognition of staff, I'd kind of like to start to read off the people who are recognized. Tony Washington, as well as Dr. Dressen, were recognized in the first commendation. Tracy Hickey and Harriet, oh great, glad I took this one, Chual Kowski, Don Clay, David White, and Sherri Johnson. So those are all people that received notes from the community members, thanking them. All right.
Announcements?
Just on the leadership updates, we probably will be looking at committee meetings, so maybe at the end of the meeting, we can just match up calendars a little bit, as we start looking at financing facilities and teaching and learning, HR committees, as we now have the committee set, just to get us rocking and rolling on that. We'll probably also have time on Saturday. And Monday, the board is moving into a work session. It's kind of that time of year where some good planning can occur. Have you passed out, can we pass out the...
I have them all.
So based on the January 11th discussions that the board had, Chair Walden Friedman and I worked on, a work session that would carry us Saturday morning and into Monday, I shouldn't say into Monday, Saturday morning and then again on Monday. That's an and versus a continuous. But it's still a real commitment on the board's part, and we do appreciate that. The three areas of focus, or four areas of focus, one will be around personalized learning experiences, and having the board help us shape that work going forward. We've got an important, February, February 16th, the entire teaching staff and administration's coming together, and they're going to start narrowing in the work that they see happening in the classrooms today and what they want to see moving forward around this. So it's a good time for the board to step into this a little bit and continue to guide us on that discussion. It's very much been part of our world over the past three or four years, and prior to that as well. We'll also talk a little bit about the budget, the budget planning, not only for '16-'17 but beyond. We're going to spend some time with Old Architect, looking at our construction projects and some of the work occurring around that, and having the board preview some of the planning. And finally, as necessary, we'll do some district policy work, again shaping some of the planning going forward. We'll also lay out at that point, just the calendar that we have going forward for the board. It's going to be February, March, a lot of planning going on, a lot of shaping, but April and May, going to be a lot of decision-making, both on the construction side, as well as some of our staffing and programming plans. And then we'll move right into construction, and that's always going to keep us hopping, but very exciting times, and so I think this is a good pause time for us. And I thank Chair Walden Friedman for his work with this and helping shape it. Again, we'll be able to be a little bit flexible Saturday morning, and then again, we'll see how far we get Saturday to shape our Monday event.
Great. All right. Any questions or other announcements anybody might have? Hearing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
So we'll get...
You pick, Sarah.
Randy will be the move, Sarah will be the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Great, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.